Good afternoon, everybody. It's five minutes after the hour of one. I'll call to order this meeting of the Community and Culture Committee. A reminder to those present that we have, through the marvels of modern technology, councillor Vandivers in the French climate beaming in via audio link. This meeting, it would appear, is sponsored by but in no way editorially beholden to the bottled water industry, given recent events. We have apologies from Mayor Kull, councillor Alder and councillor Newell. I'll move those apologies to be accepted. Seconded councillor Stedman, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Confirmation of the agenda. I'll move that the agenda be confirmed that with the amendment that item 10 be taken before item 9 seems to make sense. And with regard to standing order 2.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconded councillor Staines, all those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Declarations of interest? Any amendments to be made to the interests of register? There being none? I will move that the committee notes the elected members' interest register and confirms the proposed management plan. Seconded councillor Staines, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Confirmation of minutes for the Grants Subcommittee meeting, 20th of June. Councillor Staines? Would you like to move those? Thank you. Seconded councillor Lord Fissell, all those in favour? Those against? That is carried, thank you. Part A items. Dr Griffin, welcome. Speaking to the Ataga Museum report to contributing local authorities, May through June 2017. All yours.
Okay. Kiara, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here as usual. I won't go through the report in detail. I know you're all really busy and have got a busy agenda today. But just to reflect that this covers the period to the end of June. I have a board meeting on Friday where we'll update this to the latest. Obviously, we're very excited about the fact that the museum's programme Yoga with Butterfly has won the most innovative programme at the Museums Artera Conference. And we're excited that a member of our staff won a national award from the Royal Astronomical Society of New Zealand for his contribution to astronomy education. I think that speaks to the quality of some of the people we've got at the museum. Last month, we opened an exhibition that first opened at the museum called Hakui, Women of Kaithahu. That is now open at the Canterbury Museum and it will be open for about another five or six months. We took a party from the museum to build the exhibition and took all the material down there. And it's been very popular. It's now running at the Canterbury Museum and many thousands of people have seen it over the last couple of months. We've done quite a lot of work at the museum behind the scenes. In particular, we went through our very popular gallery, Animal Attic, and replaced the lighting and took the opportunity to make sure that there were no pests in there by freezing all of the various creatures in a deep freeze for a couple of weeks. And that work was done over the course of six weeks. And Animal Attic is now back and open. The most important thing that's happened that isn't covered in this report is that Discovery World and Tropical Forest are now closed for renovation. We're spending about $2.5 million renovating the exhibitions in Discovery World. We're upgrading Tropical Forest. And they will be reopening on or around the 1st of December with 50 new interactive exhibits and a completely renovated Tropical Forest. So there'll be a big push from the museum later in the year. But before that, in, I think, a week on Friday, we're opening our Permian Monsters exhibition, which is an exhibition all about pre-dinosaurs with animated pre-dinosaurs. And we've got high hopes that that will attract a number of people to the museum over the next couple of months. And in parallel with that, we're opening a planetarium show called Flying Monsters, which is narrated by David Attenborough. So we're hopeful that dinosaurs will attract a lot of people to the museum over the next six months. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Obviously, there's a lot going on at the museum and we do appreciate the ongoing support that we get from Dunedin City Council and the other funding councils.
Thank you, Dr Griffin. Questions? Councillor Lord?
Dr Griffin, it was just right at the end. Health and safety, you've just got work continues on projects to improve the museum's health and safety. There's nothing specific we need to worry about there. That's just a generic.
Yeah, we've got a little piece of work going on around the atrium railings at the moment. They are going to be increased in height. We're just waiting for the architectural plans. But that's the only main significant issue. Well, significant is the wrong word, but that's the main issue that we're dealing with. And the fact is that anybody who's got an atrium, there is a danger of people kind of going over the top. So we're just making sure that we're up to standard and the thing looks good as well. But other than that, no, we're on top of all of health and safety issues at the museum.
Thank you for that. Further questions? Someone, councillor Lord, has moved that the committee note the Ataga Museum report to June 2017. Seconded councillor Wilson, any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? Oh, apologies. Any questions from you, councillor Vandivers?
No problems at all, just voted for, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you, Dr Griffin. Appreciate your time. Item number seven, Community and Culture Non-Financial Activity Report for the quarter ended 30 June 2017. Mr Hawke, welcome. Any opening remarks you would like to make?
Through the chair, no initial remarks. I take the report as read and be happy to respond to any questions from the committee. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions of the report? Councillor Gary?
I was warming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. I was wanting to know, I noticed that many of the quarterly results had a small decrease, but in fact were up on last year. Is there a seasonal aspect to that?
I would think that's largely the explanation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I guess following on from that, there are two ways. Once we've had this monthly residents' opinion survey for a year or two, there are two direct comparisons to be made. One is to the quarter immediately prior and one is to the same quarter next year. So that's probably something to bear in mind in future reporting. Yeah, thank you. Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Bernie, Mr Hawke, I look at paragraph 28, that was a fan trail, not a fan trial. Page 45.
Yes, yes, well corrected.
Yeah, that's right. And do you have anything? Because it seemed like it went very well and was quite popular.
I'm sorry, I don't have any additional information just at this stage. I could source that for the committee if desired.
No, that's okay.
I have a question that I've probably asked before and it's around the way that the questions are framed in the residents' opinion survey. Are those, is it people's? The people who respond to that question, people who have used those facilities? Or is it just the general community perception of value of those facilities? When I look at things especially like Olverston, which have very low local usage?
Through the chair, that's probably a technical question that, again, I'm sorry, I'm probably not the right person to respond to that. If we had someone from the council policy team, perhaps we could get some clarification on that particular point.
Through the chair, we can ask the policy team who look after that to maybe circulate the question so people are aware what that is. I do believe it's the use of the service, but maybe wrong. But we can clarify that and circulate by email.
Nothing urgent? Any further questions of the report? Councillor Lord?
Look, page 43, Mr Hawke, I just noticed the differences like last July, for example, so the first, and this is Dunedin Public Art Gallery visitation. July, we were hugely over. And then when you see at the end, there's quite big differences, May and June, but most of the other months track fairly similarly. Is that timing of a cruise ship or?
Through the chair, I think it's more related to the specific exhibitions that are on at the time. And if my memory serves me correctly, that was the Obliteration Room. And that was a hugely successful exhibition, which generated sort of great door count and positive feedback. So I think it's more exhibition-driven than so much cruise ship visitation.
Councillor O'Malley?
If I just follow up that answer, then the question is, so when you do get that kind of response, does that then influence the decisions on the kind of exhibitions we do in the future?
Again, probably the directors are better placed, but my understanding is that they'll try and get a well-balanced exhibition programme so that, particularly at the art gallery, there'll be a range of out-of-town exhibitions, exhibitions using existing collections, exhibitions calling on local artists. So they'll try and get a well-rounded, but well-rounded programme. And the programmes are really planned, in many cases, up to a couple of years in advance. So it's really sourcing popular exhibitions elsewhere in New Zealand or overseas.
This is really being a measure of the fact that you'd planned well and they've turned up rather than you using this to determine?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's sort of the, I suppose, based on the popularity elsewhere, that's usually a good indication, indicated that it may well be popular in Dunedin. But that's the, I suppose, the professional decisions the curators and the directors will make around bringing in external exhibitions.
Thank you. And while it's outside of the scope of this report, sorry, councillor Wilson, an appropriate time to put in a plug for Francis Uprichard's Jealous Saboteurs, which opened over the weekend and is a fantastic survey of one of the more important artists of her generation. Any further questions? No, someone want to move? Oh, councillor Vandivers, any questions of the report?
No, all good, thank you.
Councillor Wilson has indicated a willingness to move. Seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? That is carried, thank you. Item eight, the return of our submission to the inquiry into the 2016 local authority elections. Who is speaking to this? Excellent, thank you. Any opening remarks?
No, none. I'm available to assist.
Okay. At this point, I'll indicate my willingness to move the draft submission with the deletion of paragraphs 11 and 16 as per the order paper. But any questions for Ms Rusha from the committee? Anything from you, councillor Vandivers?
I don't have questions as such, but I certainly would like to suggest some changes similar to those that I already circulated by email that don't seem to have been taken up.
Thank you. That's, I'll take that as a willingness to move consequential motions should this fail, although it may be helpful to get some advice from staff as to whether amendments can be proposed that are counter to the resolution currently on the table.
Yes, we think they can be provided they find a second hand.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? No? Fine contribution from out in the foyer. So, as I said, I'm going to move the submission as it is currently drafted, deleting paragraph 11, which speaks to, I mean, there are two options presented in the report. Paragraph 11 is alternative wording, supporting the retention of the deposit for candidates. And paragraph 16 is the other, one of the other options presented. And that speaks to not supporting the implementation of online voting. So in short, it is the submission as drafted, but supporting the removal of the deposit and supporting ongoing investigations into online voting.
I have a procedural question.
Go for it.
Are we able to take those two separately?
Happy to, absolutely.
That would be very helpful.
Happy to have them voted on separately. And we need to make consequential amendments, perhaps, to the endorsement of the sole submission, depending on where those two things land. That's fine. Councillor Wilson will second that. Any?
Can we also take four and five separately, please?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I don't think that has any, I don't think there'd be any flow-on effects of us being in favour or against those. So that, yeah, happy to do that, councillor Vandivers. Are you, would you like them taken separately or are you comfortable with four and five being taken together?
Comfortable for them being taken together. Much more comfortable if I get the opportunity to explain why I'd like them to be deleted.
That's, yeah, that's fine. You'll have an opportunity to speak to the submission in general. So that's fine. We can take four and five separately and we're taking 11, voting on the deletion of 11 and 16. Any other procedural or any other questions at this point? Yeah, question?
In light of question, of paragraph four and my understanding of that, that people can choose to, this is making it possible for people to give their gender, their ethnicity and their age, but it's not a requirement or is it seen as a requirement? But at the moment, you can't publish them if people want them published.
Correct.
So it's not a mandatory thing, but it's something that I could offer up in my list of stuff. Thank you.
Yes, so if you wanted to make that clearer in that submission, we would extend that last sentence to say, provided that this is an option for individuals to select.
Voluntarily or?
Yes.
Yeah, thank. Just for clarity, thank you.
That's fine. Okay, so that is the, do we have that? Councillor O'Malley, are you speaking to the motion?
Well, I'm actually wondering, can we speak, are we going to speak to each of these individual as it comes or do we speak now?
That wasn't my intention. My intention was to get, was to have people to speak to the submission and then we vote on the constituent parts separately, but just for the sake of efficiency.
Well, then, can I speak?
You can. I was just wondering if we can, are we getting this up on, or that's in process? Councillor O'Malley? Fire away.
So I just want to talk about the deletion of option 11 and what I perceive as a difference in interpretation of what that deposit means and described in paragraph 10. For my own personal perspective, like you, well, I obviously got on council, so I got my thing back from running for council, but did not get the Merrel one back because in fact, because there's only one person really who ever gets over that line and most of the others don't. Point, I've always historically thought it was, and I believe it was clarified at the council meeting, was that that deposit is for ensuring that candidates are really going to make an effort to actually attend and be part of the electoral process. And if they do, they'll generally get it back. And therefore, they get it back. So as a barrier to, it's not a fee and it's described as a fee recovery event. And so I feel that the council is misinterpreting the purpose of that in the first place. And on the second hand, I would predict that with it gone, there'll be 30 candidates for mayor next election.
Councillor Wilson?
Are you going to talk to this first, though? As chair, I'm just, I'm happy to do my turn, but you're only going to, you're right once.
Yeah, I can do. Yeah, thank you. And speaking, in speaking to this, I think the substantive points being made in the submission as drafted and the amendments or options that I've chosen to include in this resolution are about access to democracy and participation in local democracy. The, I think, that I think I would struggle to support anything that, I'll frame it more positively, find it hard to not support anything that reduces the barrier to people choosing to stand for office. And while it's easy for us in this room to sit around and say, well, $200 isn't that much really, it's a hell of a lot of money for a number of people who I think could potentially make a very fine contribution to civic and public life. And as councillor O'Malley has shown, you don't need to spend a cent after that to successfully get yourself elected. So, and I find it difficult to swallow the argument that a $200 barrier will stop frivolous or vexatious or less worthy candidates from putting themselves forward without wanting to cast dispersions on anybody past or present who has managed to make it through those hurdles. So I think, given the cost to council of administering it and the general, my general feeling that reducing barriers to standing for public office should be a given where possible, I support the removal of the deposit scheme. As to demographics and getting the better information, better information we can, we have a huge issue in local government with voter turnout. The way that we traditionally deal with that is we wait for six months until before the election, go, oh, hell, we had a terrible turnout last time, we better make a pamphlet and we'll distribute that around. And then it doesn't make a hell of a lot of difference and we're back where we started. I think that if we can get better information on who is or isn't participating in our local democratic systems, we'll have a far better chance of targeting our messaging and our engagement in areas we most need it to be able to get a broader and more equitable rate of participation, not just in voting, but in making submissions on council plans and strategies and budgets. So that's the intention there. I've certainly acknowledged the concerns around the security of online voting. I'm still not 100% convinced myself, but I don't think that those concerns are such that we should stop trying to come up with something that would work. And it may not even work at a population scale. It may be something that we can make available to people with visual impairments, for example, who we've, we heard in the previous trainee, are denied access to a private ballot, the kinds of things that we all take for granted. And those quotes are directly linked in here. So I think this is a way of acknowledging that there is value in continuing those investigations while still being some anxieties around the security. And I don't, and I don't believe that it's fair for us to turn around and say that central government should pay for it all. So that the wording around the apportionment of the cost of those sorts of things between central and local government, I think, is important there too. And finally, just on the creation of Maori wards, and I'd like to acknowledge the work of Andrew Judd, former mayor of New Plymouth and self-proclaimed recovering racist, and his petition to parliament that this Select Committee inquiry is specifically seeking feedback on. Currently, council can create a Maori ward in their electorate, one of the tools that we have to try and ensure we have better mana finua representation in our local government processes. But as a result of that, you need to publish a public notice that tells your community that if 5% of them get up a petition, they can call a referendum to overturn that, which puts the capacity you have to ensure representation for mana finua in your community at the mercy of a majority, a public vote, and very rarely do minority populations by, although that seems a crude way to explain our treaty partners, but very rarely are their interests best served by a majority vote. It's inconsistent with the way that we treat the creation of any other ward, boundary or such. And so I think bringing that into line is only fair in areas where that territorial authority has decided that that is the best way to address questions of representation in thearohi. So those are the four big things for me, the four important things for me in this submission and why I would encourage people to support it as moved. Thank you. Councillor Benson Pope?
Just to have a procedural question, are you also moving, does your motion include the removal of four and five?
No, that wasn't the intention. They'll be, four and five will be voted on separately.
That's not what this is.
So that, this is, it's being, it's being entered down out of sight, but no, three is not part of this. No, thank you. Councillor Wiley?
Just checking, when we look at paragraphs 10 and 11, I take it that applies to running for mayor or for running for council, so both?
Any deposit, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Sorry, through the chair again.
Is it a question or are you speaking to it?
Yeah, no, the question for Christie. Is there any, or was there any discussion around the difference about, you know, having no deposit running for council and having a $200 running for the Merrel tea? Because obviously, there's a lot less people that run for the Merrel tea. I think it was 11 last time versus 43, I think it might have been for council.
I hadn't had an indication from elected members on that topic, so the submission at this point is silent, but it could be developed to request that the electoral deposit applies in some cases and not in others, if that was the wish of the meeting.
Thank you.
Further speakers or? Oh, or, I will wait. Does anyone have further questions before we get into?
Yeah, this is my question.
That's a question, councillor Lord, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
Look, it was actually came out of Aaron's comments, councillor Hawkins's comments, but I just wanted to know, what's the current payment process at the moment for our paper elections, our postal elections? Is that all paid for by the city council or is that government? Just noticing Aaron's willingness to pay half if we went for online voting.
For clarity, that's not what I said and that's not what's in the submission. I think it talks to, it talks to an apportionment, of course.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, and what the question is, is what do we currently do? Does anyone know?
So we share the cost of the election with other local authorities. We run the election for the district health board, if there is one, the ORC, and any other elections that are running at the same time. So all those costs are split between the entities.
Yeah, and no government paying at all, so, yeah.
Councillor O'Malley?
Christie, thank you. I just got questions around the administrative costs, around the returns. By getting rid of the deposit, will the administrative costs come down?
Yes, because there'll be zero administration. So that is referring to the process of accepting the money. It might be a cheque, it could be cash or an electronic payment. In the case of a cheque or an electronic payment, we then need to have someone verify that the payment's cleared. We need to write receipts. We need to advise the candidate that their money has been received if there's a delay in between deposit and clearance. And there have been complications where candidates have been excluded from an election because their payments haven't cleared in time or a complication around, last year we had a person who used an expired chequebook and the deposit couldn't be processed and they were excluded from being a candidate on that grant basis.
What does the cost of administering that compare to the cost of taking the returns? Because you still will require the returns to come in.
So the administrative costs that I'm thinking of when we've written the submission doesn't include the cost of dealing with the return. It's simply the administration of the deposit.
Right, so does, proportionally, is it a bigger or smaller number than what we've got to do anyway, which is taking the?
I think you would probably put two-thirds to the receiving and one-third to the return.
When considering the deposit compared to what people have reported that they paid in advertising, how many candidates reported less than $200 in spending advertising?
Oh, look, I'm sorry, I don't have that information to hand. I know that it is published on our website, I just haven't reviewed it recently enough to provide you with that answer.
Because if we were to discuss a barrier to participation, maybe the more important barrier to participation is the ability to represent yourself in the election itself. And maybe the council could have a role to play, which I would, we'd like to support, in offering a vehicle to allow people, when they are running for council, to get their voice out there that doesn't require significant advertising costs. So the question relates to that. Is the advertising, do people tend to pay more in advertising than they paid in the deposit?
I can't answer that for you today, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, but I think, just have a rough idea of the answer.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open up for speakers to the resolution. Councillor Vandevos?
Hi, I'd like to speak to four and five to begin with, and explain why it is that I'm opposed to provision of more detailed statistical analysis, including age, gender and ethnicity. I believe that this just makes it easier for wealthy analysts to market to more specific voter minorities. This better targeting of different messages to different minorities is anti-democratic because it favours highly financed parties over individual candidates, giving big parties an unfair market targeting advantage. It gets worse in that big parties can then send one message to, for instance, older voters of one ethnicity, while sending a different message to others. And we've seen the very effective use of this targeting of different messages to different minorities in the recent Trump victory in the American elections. I believe that having all this extra ability to analyse statistically where and who people are allows for untransparent voting targeting, which favours only the big party marketing machines that can afford to do this kind of analysis and can afford to target their message differently to different people. This is why I'm very concerned that four and five are anti-democratic. They are also a problem in that having to include, whether it's mandatory or not, age, gender and ethnicity, starts to create a barrier in itself to people actually signing up to the role. It's a more complicated form, a lot of people are not happy as they're categorised of one ethnicity over another. To me, four and five are fundamentally anti-democratic, and the claim that somehow, by having all this extra information, so that big parties only can target you and your specific ethnicity, whatever, that somehow that's going to increase voter turnout, I think is, quite frankly, a smokescreen. I think it's a push by big finance and big statistics to subvert rather than help the democratic process. Regarding a, sorry, that's just four and five, shall I speak to 11 and 16 now or later?
Yeah, let it all out.
Okay, I'm in favour of 11 and therefore in basically striking out number 10, because I have personal experience of the genuine nomination issue, where, not actually in the last election, but in previous elections, there were people who were basically interested in standing simply as a lark, nothing genuine about the nomination. And these individuals, and you may remember some yourself, councillor Hawkins, didn't just stand as a lark and that was that, their standing as a lark caused a lot of distraction by the media and basically worked against a focus on the genuine candidates, who really did want to go for the office, rather than just make complete pretzels of themselves in this particular forum. The $200 doesn't necessarily stop them, but I believe it has in the past prevented some. And if you don't have that slight barrier, which I don't believe is sincerely a barrier for anybody wanting to run for public office, then you have a situation where you are looking at a lot of people potentially doing it as a lark in the future, more than we've had in the past. And I also believe that what should be added to number 11 is that it is also an incentive for people to furnish their electoral forms on time. There's nothing like a little financial incentive to either disincentivise people from making a charade of the electoral process, or as an incentive to get them to furnish their electoral forms. Regarding online voting, I can see a quite strong argument for online voting, in that it will allow some people currently who have difficulties with the voting system to vote and to vote completely in private, and I take that point quite well. However, introducing a second method of voting, and you're never going to get everybody online, there will always have to be the postal vote as well, having two ways of voting doubles your chances of the vote either being mistakenly made, being made potentially twice, or in the case of online voting, being fiddled with and hacked electronically. There have been a number of instances where this has proven to have happened overseas, and the current systems for making online voting really secure, which I believe is what it needs to be, and that is more important than making it completely private for some people, that would be the main reason that I would favour option 16 and striking out 15. But my main issue is the one where the claim that including extra voter information of age, gender and ethnicity will somehow increase voter participation, I believe that all it will do is increase the power of the big, well-financed parties to give different messages to different voters. And therefore I will very strongly be voting against four and five. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Vandevos. Councillor Luffisaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I endorse all the comments that were made by councillor Hawkins as the mover of the motion for the removal of paragraph 11 and the removal of paragraph 16. In terms of the term democratic and anti-democratic and democracy, I just want to point out acknowledgement of the creation of the four Maori seats historically. At the time that they were created, the government of the day did their calculations and realised that with Maori being the major landowners, that they had to limit the number of seats to four rather than 14, as was the realistic reflection of Maori franchising. So when we talk about anti-democracy, we have to acknowledge that the last almost 180 years of the settler society that we have has consistently disenfranchised not only Maori but many other people, including poor, poor Pakel or European settler people. And, and when we're talking about voter turnout being, what, 45% here in this city in the last elections, we have to be, we do have to remove those barriers and we do have to be, we really do have to really show that we do value participatory democracy. So I would, I would endorse the maintenance of paragraphs four and five, because I don't see that, the current information that's available to, to community activists and to people who actually care about genuine democratic participation, we actually need that information in terms of age, gender and ethnicity, to actually try and mobilise and genuinely engage and make contact with communities who have been disenfranchised for generations, and that's not only Maori. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Wiley?
Thank you, Chair. Starting with paragraphs four and five, I actually look at, councillor Vandevos is actually quite right in, especially around paragraph five, in the way big data plays and what can take place with how elections can be managed by bigger organisations, and there is quite a lot of data there to be essentially targeted. I'm not a, I don't have a lot of knowledge in that area, but I do know that the Trump campaign was a big user of it, and they only were quite selective in where they marketed. In paragraph 11, I am a, I am a big supporter in retaining the deposit, especially when it comes in running for the mayoralty, versus with council, running for council, I could, I personally like the $200, I've paid it three times and I haven't, is that a problem, councillor Benson-Pope? No? Okay. I've paid it three times and got it back, received the receipt, deposit back twice. I didn't see it as a barrier, and nor did I talk to anybody through those elections in 2010, 13 or 16, found it as a barrier. Running for the mayoralty, I definitely believe that the $200 deposit needs to be retained. When I look at the 2013 election, myself and councillor Hawkins were elected onto the council through, I believe, running for the mayoralty. And when I look at the current councillors sitting around the table, we've got elder Stedman, O'Malley, Hawkins, myself and Vandevos, we all ran for mayor at the last election. Running for the mayoralty definitely gives you a boost in running for council, and I think for $200 deposit to, to do that, and I also believe that the mayoralty, the seat of mayor is a very important seat and one that really, I think, to pay $200 to have the option or ability to run for the mayoralty, I think is insignificant in relation to what you need to do to campaign for it. So I would support that. And in paragraph 15, one of the reasons I didn't support online voting at the last time, we voted for it in 2014 slash 2015, I was just looking to see on the OTT website when we actually made that decision, was the fact that the government were going to, central government were going to ask us to pay $165,000 to do that. Now, I think, and I said back then that I supported online voting, as long as central government actually contributed most of the funding for that, because it was a nationwide activity. I would struggle when we look at our voter turnout of 40, approximately, what was, 40,000 people voted, 38,000, 165,000 for a voting system not everybody was going to use, and we had to run, look at running parallel systems, we were going to have to maintain the postal plus the online system. So I would always, I would support online voting, where the costs of implementing the system are fairly apportioned, but the other fact being is, you've also got to consider that there would also be having to retain the postal voting system as well, most likely. So, thank you.
Ms. Ruscha?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify the scope of paragraph four and five, just to assist with the debate. So the proposal that you're considering is that the electoral information is provided to local authorities. Now, there is referred to in paragraph four, but it could be added to paragraph five for greater clarity, if that would assist. It's not intended that we are advocating for publication of the role or making statistics available for big data use or analysis.
Thank you, that should be helpful. Councillor Gary's going to chip finger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to speak to paragraph 11, and I'm a bit conflicted about this, I have to say, but I wanted to reflect on the experience through the last election campaign and certainly take on board barriers to people standing for election, that's one part of the equation. The other part of the equation is the voters and the confusion for them when trying to decide who to vote for. And a lot of the feedback I had from the last election was, and absolutely no criticism of those who chose to go down this track, it was certainly the case that three out of the six newly elected councillors did for the mayoralty, and my colleague to the right did a wonderful job on electionary on no cost, so that's quite an achievement. But that notwithstanding, for people voting, it was confusing, confusing around people's motivation and the number of people to vote for, particularly when it came to council and the number. My concern about taking away the deposit, it is a, it is a barrier, bigger for some than others in terms of standing for election, but the number standing, it's a very tricky area, but I think for the voter it's a problem. And I came across a lot of people who believed they had to vote for all 14, they had to choose 14 people. And one of the things I found when I was particularly talking to young people was around the fact that they didn't have to vote for 14, they could vote for two or three, and that was helpful. So the sheer numbers standing was very difficult, and I think was an obstacle to participation from a voting perspective. So I just add that reflection for what it's worth.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson?
Where to start? The $200 is an insignificant amount to stop anyone from standing, and it may well do so. I also think that at times perhaps wins have actually paid for some candidates to go up, and therefore it possibly isn't the obstacle that some may perceive it to be, but it is a cost to the city that I just don't think is fair to put onto the GSO staff, it's not adding any benefit. And if one or two extra people stand, is that a problem? I think we're mixing up the issues here, and this is about having an administration process that is, there's so much else happening in the election that actually the $200 is a nightmare and it's just a procedural problem. The fact is that I think there's been probably more problems in people getting the right people to nominate them, or getting their, being on the right electoral roll than their $200, and with some of the previous nominations in the past. So I don't think it's stopping people from standing necessarily, but it is just an administrative cost, and for that reason alone, I think it's, we should just get rid of it. As far as the online, I think it's an aspirational thing, if it isn't safe, it won't happen, but we should be aspiring for it, especially, and I think it's really well said out here, the people who don't have the advantage of voting in person at the moment, and we miss out on a lot of people who can't vote either by disability or by being overseas at the time, so I think that'll be an improvement. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to do it, it just means that we're looking at it, and it means that we're looking at the government putting some money into it, which is great. I see four and five, and I won't be voting for them, I had misread what that meant initially, but I think when we're trying to get young people to vote, to enrol, it would be great that we know that the local, that the local authority can target some advertising, it isn't about a marketing scheme for, and giving that information out to the big, whoever they might be, parties that are standing people. And I think the other thing I'm reflecting on is, there's a lot of people worrying about, not necessarily worrying about, but using their experiences of standing. I think there are a lot of young people who could easily run a campaign for free on Facebook or virtually free, and in a different way. It's about engaging those people in the first instance, you know, I look at 40% turnout, and I have to say there's better ways of doing this. And so if we focus on how do we get more people engaged in the process, I think four and five do that, I think getting rid of the $200... I think getting rid of the $200 administrative cost is great. And I think online voting also will engage people better in the process. So from my mind, they're all simple things that can happen to get a better democratic process. And that's why I'll be voting for the removal of 11, for the removal of 16 and keeping four and five in.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Lord?
I don't have a problem with four and five, but I think it should be noted that the electoral role is public information. And if those details are in there, that will be public information that's available for anyone to pick up and find out. Is that correct?
This submission is simply saying that that information is provided to the local authorities. And at this stage, my understanding is, I'd have to look at the electoral role, crikey, is that that information is not included. It's name, address, occupation is published.
And the only other problem I do have is the removal of 11. I actually think 11 should stay and the removal of 10. I think the administrative costs, while they might be inconvenient and I don't, doesn't necessarily have to be GSO doing it, but whoever is doing that, if there is going to be an administrative cost, that might actually cost the council far less in the long run than if you get another 30 or 40 people put their hand up. And that would be the extreme end, but you might get 50 people put their hand up to run for council instead of 35 or whatever, and you might get 20 or 30 of them all say, well, we'll run for the mayor because there's no cost and it gets our name in the paper. And I just think that I'm not happy to take that removal of the $200. So I'll vote against that one.
Yes, I can.
Unfortunately, brother.
Further speakers? No, if you've spoken, you've spoken, that's okay. Anyone who hasn't spoken or has a wish to? Before I put this, I have to say, I find it quite extraordinary to sit in a meeting where elected members would argue that having more people stand presumably against them in some cases is inherently a bad thing and try and frame greater competition as something of benefit to the voting public. I do find that very difficult. I find it hard to accept that there's some kind of objective and arbitrary line between a genuine candidate and a candidate who's frivolous and therefore distracting attention, media attention no less, away from the quote unquote genuine candidates. As someone who stood for election in 2010 as a younger person and got plenty of feedback after the election from people who just assumed it was a joke campaign, you know, these are not, and it was deeply serious, these are not distinctions that any one person, I think, has the right to make. And people all have their own reasons or purposes or intentions or objectives in standing for office. And that may be different to the intentions or objectives that we may have gone into. But I don't think we can make a unilateral claim that they are any less valid. We've had reassurance, I think, around the fears of big data or big statistics or the rise of Trump and Dunedin due to having greater degrees of demographic information provided to our office so we can target our education and enrolment activities better. I would point out that demographics is an incredibly old fashioned way of targeting advertising. Most of the work that Cambridge Analytics do with Trump and others is based on information freely given up by most of us via social media that is then packaged up and targeted and has nothing to do with anything that may or may not be on the electoral roll. So I look forward to a mass resignation from the world of social media, from the concerned throng, concerned about big data. So, and I think it is, just to reiterate the point, I think if we are to increase engagement with our community, which should be all of our stated aims, knowing where to focus extra, our extra efforts is incredibly useful to that end. So that's all I wanted to say. I'll take, we'll take four and five separately. And we'll vote on four and five and then 11 and then the removal of 11 and the removal of 16. And I'll take all three of those by division. Should the removal of 11 or 16 fail, people would be free to move endorsement of paragraphs 10 or 15 so that something is included in the submission to that effect. Is that clear as mud as far as process goes? Questions? Councillor Wiley?
Can I call a division on the removal of 11?
I'm taking them all by division. Don't worry about that. So we will, so this is, the first one is to retain paragraphs four and five. The first one is to retain paragraphs four and five. Per councillor Vandevos's request to take them separately, the legal is getting nervous.
Not nervous.
Just a procedural issue in respect of that. Did anyone second that suggestion from councillor Vandevos that four and five should be removed?
No, he just asked that it be voted upon separately. Yeah, it wasn't framed as an amendment. But you wanted four and five separate from the rest of the submission, is that right?
I wanted the opportunity to vote against four and five being included.
Correct. So the, yes.
I'm happy for them to be taken separately, but...
Councillor Vandevos is proposing a separate or a motion to develop the one that's been proposed by councillor Hawkins. So both...
I know that, I'm asking who's seconding it. Yeah, in terms of voting, I'll second it, or councillor O'Malley. Councillor Vandevos is... Yep.
I'm relaxed about however you manage it procedurally, Mr Chairman, but my question was, if someone's making a suggestion in this forum, then it's actually a motion or an amendment and it does need a seconder. And now we've got one, so that's fine.
In that case, for clarity, we are voting on the removal of paragraphs four and five. To remove four and five. An amendment moved by councillor Vandevos and seconded by councillor Wiley. By division.
Councillor Lefesao? Councillor Benson Pope?
No.
Councillor Gary?
No.
Councillor Hall?
No.
Councillor Lord?
No.
Councillor O'Malley?
No.
Councillor Staines? Councillor Steadman?
No.
Councillor Maybus?
Lee?
Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
No.
Councillor Wilson?
No. Motion lost.
Oh, I was also a no. Sorry. So that's, so that's lost. So that's lost, four and five remain. So the next one is the removal of paragraph 11, which is the retention of paragraph 10, which is the removal of electoral deposits. Clear? And we'll take that by division also, thank you.
Councillor Lefesao?
So this is the removal of paragraph 11, so the retain...
Councillor Lefesao, you. Councillor Benson Pope? Councillor Gary? Councillor Hall?
No.
Councillor Lord?
No.
Councillor O'Malley?
No.
Councillor Staines?
No.
Councillor Steadman?
Yes.
Councillor Vandevos?
Yes.
Councillor Wiley?
No.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes.
And councillor Hawkins?
No.
No, you want to remove it?
No, the removal of paragraph 11 is the retention of paragraph 10, which speaks for removing the electoral deposit. Some of the votes did raise eyebrows, I have to say, as we read around. We can do it again. Yes, so... To be clear, the removal of paragraph 11 leaves paragraph 10 included. Paragraph 10 states the council supports the removal of the electoral deposit. So if you want to vote in favour of keeping the electoral deposit, you would vote for removing paragraph 11 and retaining paragraph 10. If you want to keep, sorry, if you want to keep... To remove, to keep the... No, to remove the electoral deposit, you remove paragraph 11 and retain paragraph 10. Yes. We can, we can redo it.
Now then we can vote.
Sorry, my apologies. I did put the motion. No, we'll take the, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take the vote again. Oh, sure, okay. If that's easier for people. We'll vote in fav, we'll vote in favour of, the voters in support of option one. So you either are or aren't in support of option one. Yes. Paragraph 10. For or against paragraph 10? Yes. Councillor Wilson? Oh, sorry. I or nay? Paragraph 10. Voting for the retention of paragraph 10. That's confusing councillor Wilson, because there's another option one further down. It's not how I would have framed it, but here we are.
Councillor Lefesao?
Aye.
Councillor Benson Pope?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
No.
Councillor Lord?
No.
Councillor O'Malley?
No.
Councillor Staines?
No.
Councillor Steadman?
Yes.
Councillor Vandevos? Lady?
No.
Councillor Wiley?
No.
Councillor Wilson?
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Okay, we are six all.
That's carried. Sorry, that's carried. So now, we are voting for the, to follow this, the retention of option one, which is paragraph 15.
Councillor Lefesao?
Aye.
Councillor Benson Pope?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
No.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Steadman?
Aye.
Councillor Vandevos?
No.
Councillor Wiley?
Aye.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Carried, ten to.
Thank you. We don't need to make any changes then to the endorsement of the Solghum submission, Ms Ruscha? Is that right? Nothing we've agreed is inconsistent with that?
That's correct, so that will remain.
Do we need a motion though? Just to make consequential changes to make this make sense? Because at the moment we've just retained things and haven't deleted anything.
Yes, I think that would be wise and that would permit the inclusion of the points of clarification that the members raised during debate.
Okay. So I'll move that consequential changes be made consistent with the motions. Agreed. Seconding councillor Lefesao, any discussion? I'll put all those in favour. Those against? That is carried. Thank you. And that is the end of that item. Which takes us to item nine, a recalculation of rates relief grants. Mr Coffey? Yep. Welcome, Mr Coffey, any opening remarks?
Thank you, Mr Chair. This is one of the number of supports that council provide to not-for-profit organisations throughout the city and supporting organisations. It's based on the amount of rate that the organisation pays either as a tenant or as the property owner. They, organisations are required to pay their full rates account, no matter what. But this money is given to them to spend in whatever way they would like. It's just the rate is the mechanism to work out what the grant will be. Okay? So this report should have come to you earlier, because what we're basically asking you is how we've restructured and recalculated the rates after the grants review has detrimentally affected some of the organisations. And we want to know if that's what you wanted to happen. It's an unintended consequence of how we've reassessed them. And we're just seeking advice if that's what you want to happen or if it's, you would like us to change the way the policy is worded so that we can continue with a previous practice. As you note in the report, this doesn't have a budgetary effect just because of the way it's been operated, basically.
Yeah, thank you. Questions? Councillor Lord?
Just, I've got a bit of a problem, or no problem, but I'd just like, for example, on page 59, we've got a summary group of organisations and I'm just wondering if these figures are accurate because they don't seem to be totally accurate with the actual examples that you give on the pages 65 and 66. For example, the Berwick Pool Trust, it says that in 2015, they got $268. This year, they got $93. Once these changes are proposed, next year they'll get $279. And when you look on the actual sheet with all of them, it says that they'll actually get $167, so that'd be a hundred odd dollars down. When you take, for example, Zeus.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. Sorry, councillor. And our calculation of the grant, we determine in any organisations that with 20 kilometres outside the main service city areas, we actually give them slightly more. We treat them with more, how do you put it? Yeah, more consideration, because those resources, we would like to see, make sure that they actually stay in that place. So this is, that's a miscalculation on my behalf.
So that was, so next year, will they get the figure on page 59?
Yes, they will.
Okay, and the other one is...
Yeah, that's my mistake.
For example, the Zeus Sports and Darts Club, I'm not sure where they are. But it's next year, they'll get 401, but you turn over the page and it says they'll get 770. So it's another $329. So I just didn't have a lot of confidence in the figures. There were other mistakes too.
We will have finance go through this property when we do the reassessment. It's part of one of the issues we're having at the moment.
Further questions? This is remedying miscalculations in the last financial year?
Yes.
With ongoing, obviously implications for this year and beyond?
And beyond, yes.
Right. And as it currently stands, given decisions made around racing clubs, et cetera, it doesn't, the financial impact is...
Is negligible.
Is negligible.
Yes.
But when it says in the advantages, disadvantages at the end of the report that over time that might increase, is that because more facilities will spring up, there will be qualified...
More organisations can actually apply. I don't believe that every organisation in the city that would qualify have made an application to us. Some organisations, when we asked them to reapply, didn't reapply despite missing a couple of letters and requests with information to do that. And also, the rates do rise, and unless this rises in comparison with them, the council will go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor LaFeeso is happy to move the recommendations per the order paper. Seconding Councillor Benson-Pope, any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
That is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor.
Item... We've done item 10. Yeah, yeah. The next item before we move into public excluded part of the meeting is items for notification for the chair, if anyone has anything to raise at this point. No? In that case, I'll move as per the order paper that we move into public excluded. Seconding Councillor Lord, all those in favour? Those against? That is carried.